All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started for our regular meeting for May of 2014 on a rainy evening here. I appreciate all you guys coming out. All right, call the roll.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Habermill?
Here.
Mr. Harding?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis? And Mr. Rice?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis will be here in a few minutes.
Jasmine. Kindergarten. Miss Williams. A doctor.
The kids here were all caught doing something good this month in school. That's why they're being recognized and doing their introductions and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Liam Fleming. First grade. Mrs. Hane. Farmer.
My name is Mari. My last name is Kelly Williams. My teacher's Mrs. Lux. When I grow up, I wanna be a doctor.
My name is, my name is Chloe. And I'm in first grade. My teacher's Ms. Schultz. And when I grow up, I wanna be a waitress.
My name is, my name is, oh my god. My name. My name is Carmen. I'm in third grade. Ms. Macabanas. I wanna be a doctor.
I'm Jeremy Cooper. I'm in third grade and I wanna be a fireman.
Gavin. Kindergarten. Ms. Slow. Work at Bendix.
Go. Come back over here. Come over here, come here, come here, come here. All right, you guys are gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Here's the flags over here.
Please join us.
Get started, guys. Ready? You guys lead us.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to three holy churches, saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're the first guy that came in and said there was gonna be a farmer, so you're right away. Tell me how it looked like your surprise.
Where did he come from?
Bendix.
Oh, Bendix, yeah.
That's funny. That's the first one of those we had.
First farmer, too.
Yeah. Still. Can I steal your cheaters, Grant? I left mine on the car. Sorry. It's been a long meeting here. All right, we're gonna move on to item number four, which is our student liaison update with Mr. Habermill.
Okay, we've got a couple of presentations today. First, we wanna invite Evy Hess, our food services manager, and her snack team to talk about our wellness program.
Is that mic on? Do you wanna use the other side?
Oh, maybe I'll do that. Leave that at their height.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mrs. Hess. I'm the cafeteria manager at Saylorway Middle School. I wanted to bring some of my members of the snack team tonight to just speak to you about the program. We started this snack program. It stands for Student Nutrition Advisory Council. We started it about three years ago. I have sixty membership, but a lot of practices and games. Well, I can't imagine games in this weather, but there was a lot of things going on tonight. And I'm very thrilled with the group that showed up here tonight. My first, why don't you guys just go up to the microphone? And how about say your name and your grade? And maybe what you enjoy doing about the snack team? Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Brianna Castello. I'm in fourth grade and I liken, I enjoy taste testing and I like how Mrs. Hess treats us.
Hi, I am. Hi, I am Molly Wade. I'm in fourth grade. And. And we have a lot of fun at the snack team meetings. But I think the best part of our meetings was our one during lunch. We felt important and our friends saw how much fun we were having. We tried whole grain cookies and much more. Sometimes if we were, if we rated items high enough, Mrs. Hess would put them on menu for the next day. I feel that I'm making healthier choices of what I eat. Thank you.
I'm Lindsula Newman. I'm in fifth grade and I like trying new, healthy foods.
My name's Destiny Antonio. I'm in fourth grade and I like everything about snack team.
Hi, my name is Kendy McLean. I'm in fourth grade. And my favorite thing about being a snack team is taste testing all the healthy food that Ms. Hess has.
My name's Michael Huff. I'm in sixth grade and I like trying new foods.
My name's Rachel Hansen. I'm in fifth grade. And my favorite part of the snack team is trying all the new foods.
My name is, my name is Ren Willthing. I'm in fifth grade. My favorite part of snack team is trying all the new foods. Healthy food.
My name's Otto Shafer. I'm in fifth grade and I like trying new foods.
Thank you. We had our final taste testing the other day in which I informed the group for the first time that I had won the Louisa Bled Award that I spoke at last month's board meeting. And that award was because of them, the snack team. It was a project that I worked on and they helped me with it this year. And I thanked them. And then I, I did tell them on the twenty-seventh of May, we're having a reporter from the Cleveland Food Management Magazine come to our school. She's already interviewed me and the interview is on the website. I guess you make the website first and then they decide whether you make the magazine. So it is, it's a nice, they pretty much got all the quote right. They called Louisa Bled Award the Lunch Lady Superhero Award, but close enough. So, and I wanna thank especially all the members that aren't here tonight and but in the ones that came. Thank you guys for making this a really, really great year. I've had fun and I hope you have had fun, too. And next year's menu is almost done, thanks to your help. Thank you very much for inviting us. Oh, did you? Yes?
So what was the worst food you tried?
Well, that's a good one.
Easily the rib eye, the sandwich that we had today.
So, so I had a good track record until today. You know, those barbecue ribs, we have not, the boneless ribs, we've not had in a good year. So I brought them back today. And I probably heard more complaints out of the hundred-and-eighty-something days. Oh, we don't like those. So, yeah, that's getting scratched off. I'm not even bringing it back next year. The, the spicy fish stick, the Baja fish sticks? Cause they, they made those before, like in a, did you like it better as a taco or just not at all? In the taco shell? Okay, all right. All right, well, thanks. And that's what, we have an open thing that they can, yeah, suggest anytime.
See what you started?
Which they all have tonight. But did some of you try it and you did like it? Did any of you? I know I got some. It was about fifty-fifty, I think it was.
I tried, but I couldn't make it as good as you. I went right home after I tried it.
Oh, did you?
I wasn't nearly as successful trying to make it, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a trick.
It's good to get feedback, huh? You liked the ribs?
Did not? Okay, well, boy, those things aren't coming back. Good thing I'm out. I'll send the rest of them to the high school.
Good job, Evy.
Is that okay? Thank you very much.
All right, our second group tonight, I'm gonna let you introduce, Mr. Pumpin.
Thanks, Mr. Habermill. It's my pleasure to call up our counseling team. Two of our high school counselors are here tonight. Laura Stubblebine and Kara Habermill. And soon to join us is Courtney Feige. They're going to come up and talk to us about the American School Counselor Association and some of the plans that we have for next school year. So thank you for coming and telling us a little bit about what we have in store for the, for the coming school year.
Good evening. Can you hear me at this? We've kinda started this process of wanting to improve our school counseling program last year. We met in February with the counselors that are in the district. So we also met with Shawna Stillman and with Elizabeth Greenwald, who's at the K-three building and the middle school. And we decided that we really wanted to improve what we're doing. We wanna make ourselves as useful as possible for the students, provide them the information. Things are really changing once they leave our building and the high school. And we wanna make sure that they have the best information, that we're providing them with information so that they are ready for the next step. The ASCA model is what is the American School Counselors Association. And that is the model that many states have used to make sure that they're providing the best possible information for the school and the students. This is kind of a quote about what is changing. So many times we work with our students and they really don't know how important the information is because they're like, we'll get the information when we're done in the next step. And we know the information that we've seen. One of the areas that we really need to approve upon in our building, particularly for the high school, is our career. And what is the next step that these students are gonna take? We're gonna use a program next year called Career Cruising, which we're really excited to have. It's gonna have the students do a lot of interest inventory, look at different careers, look at the options, look at the different education that is needed. Because many times students see the only path for their success is for a four-year college. And we know that there's a lot of different ways to reach that next step. So that is one of the other things that we have. This is kind of, what do counselors do? That is the question that's asked of me. My own father asked me, so what do you do? And the question has been for a long time, what do counselors do? If, oh, if you have somebody crying, they'll come to you. You wanna make sure that they're doing well with their grades and so forth. But the next thing we have to look at is how are our students different because of what we are doing? And we do a lot of different things at the high school. But the one piece that we don't necessarily have is the data to show where our students were when we started with them, how they're progressing and where they are once they've left the high school. One of the things that we'd really like to start to do is track our students once they graduate. When they go on to that four-year college? How long does it take them to get through the process? Are they completing in four years? Are they completing in five years? Are they finishing? Are they staying at the school they originally started? Are we preparing them for the next step? So we need to collect data to make sure that we're, make sure, make sure that we're providing our students with the best information we can. As far as expanding on the role of a school counselor, we have three domain areas and you can see those listed on the screen. And I would like to just touch upon them. This is the knowledge base of what school counselors provide, whether you are in an elementary building, whether you are, as we are, at the high school. As far as the academic domain, sometimes people think that that's self-explanatory. But I wanna remind everyone in the audience and our Board of Education members that this includes college and career readiness. This includes educational planning. This includes how to help all of our students reach their, their academic goals as they graduate from high school. So that's the academic domain. Career is the next domain area. And again, Mrs. Habermill touched upon this. We are thrilled to be able to say that we're gonna utilize a web-based, comprehensive career programming next year. This is all grade levels, K through twelve. And it will help students explore their interest areas and career fields. It will allow students to look at military careers. And then also to begin exploring college majors, whether they're looking at a specific major because of a school subject that they excel in. They might look at a college major in a career cluster area. And then lastly, in the Career Cruising program that we're gonna utilize, it will help students begin the college search, begin looking at universities that may offer that major, offer other opportunities. Last domain area for school counselors is personal social. And this is a big area, not only with the academics, not only with the career piece, but we want students to fully develop their personal potentials, to fully develop their social skills, to fully develop their personal management, their day-to-day living. So those are the three domain areas for school counseling. These bulleted items mention some of the specifics that a school counseling program can include. And, you know, we were asked to keep our presentation to five minutes this evening, but truthfully, we could talk five minutes in each of the areas. That's how important they all are. Again, when we're talking about academic achievement, we can't stress how important that is, especially as common core standards are coming into play. You'll see the expression achievement gap. And that could be for an individual student, how to help them improve in the classroom. Or it could be school-wide. You know, maybe at the high school, we start to really monitor, where are our students going on to college? What's the, the popular four-year university for our students at Vermillion? We could talk in the areas of the academic achievement. As a school counselor, my role is to help promote positive learning. And we want that each and every day for our students. In regards to the mission statement, I wanna touch upon this from the area that we have a district mission statement. And that is to inspire students to be leaders, lifelong learners. At the high school level, we talk about personalized education. We talk about progressive learning. The elementary kids that are still here, the ones that were here for the pledge, I was told that they start every day, their entire elementary building, by saying, excellence begins here. So the importance of all of those philosophical ideas in the mission statement, we worked on this earlier this fall to address a school counselor's mission statement. And it really encompasses a lot of those same ideas. We want to provide a comprehensive program in grades K to twelve. We want to provide engaging curriculum opportunities so that all students attain their highest level of achievement. And again, when we talk about highest levels of achievement, we're going back to not only highest levels of academic achievement, what are the highest career potentials for our students? And then the highest levels of personal, social, overall well-being. And then part of the school counseling mission statement that we need to stress is, it's a partnership. It's not just us, along with the elementary and middle school counselor. It's not the five of us. It's all nine-hundred-and-some students at the high school and so on in the other buildings. But it's also a partnership with our parents. It's a partnership with our teachers. Our jobs include all of those individuals. And then lastly, our partnership that we wanna expand upon is with our community members. How can we expand and reach out to the community organizations to have more to provide for our students? This is some of the recommendations from the National School Counselors Organization. And again, I don't mean to belabor and make the presentation longer, but I think we have to address some of the target areas. The very first recommendation from the national level for school counselors is to have a caseload of two-hundred-and-fifty students to one counselor. For those of you who are interested, I can give you some of the numbers. At the high school level, Mrs. Habermill and I, this year, I'm sorry while I flip through here, but we work with, I have four-hundred-and-thirty-one students in my caseload alone. She has four-hundred-and-eighty-two students on her caseload. Saylorway, Mrs. Stillman, six-hundred-and-eight students. For one school counselor to help each and every one of those students reach the success level. And I don't have access to Mrs. Greenwald's totals at the elementary. So again, these are national recommendations. We can talk about the eighty-twenty rule. You know, we provide direct services, services to our students. We go into the classrooms. We talk to them about college and career planning. We talk to them about the testing that we've done this year. Scheduling, of course, at the high school is a big piece. Those are all direct services. And then we talk about maybe indirect services where I am responding to an immediate need of a student. You know, whether it's something that they need with their academic planning or something that maybe there's, you know, activities going on in their personal world, things at home that they need the immediate assistance from a school counselor. And we are trained to provide all that. But the eighty-twenty rule is so that we devote eighty percent of our time directly with students. And that's what we're all about as school counselors. We could talk about the number of committees that we are on at the schools. Special education's another big piece of our jobs. Working with IEP meetings, working with evaluation team reports. So those are some of the direct services. Program assessments, we want to know from our students, what is it that you need from us, the school counselors? But you know what? We also wanna know that from our parents. What do the parents need from us, the school counselors? And we want to know that information from our teachers. We wanna work with our principals and create an annual agreement, talking about, these are the program goals in each of our buildings for the school counselors. How can we provide that direct contact, more FaceTime with our kids? And then other areas there, we've talked a little bit about data. And again, I could go on for five minutes about data alone. There's three areas. I'll make it brief. We should be collecting data in academic achievement areas. That seems like that's a given. But that could include not only where are the kids going to the university once they graduate? How many of our kids are enrolled in upper-level classes? Next year, we're interested in that because of advanced placement. How many of our students need to challenge themselves in rigorous courses? We could talk about kids on the honor roll. We could talk about, you know, outstanding department students. So the use of data in academic areas. I think in another area to collect data is attendance. And all of our buildings this year have attendance, I don't know if I would say contests, but they have attendance motivation pieces. We are trying to look at the direct impact of your time in the classroom, learning, instructional time. And the third area of attendance should be for school counselors to really analyze with the administration about behavioral data. Of course, what does that include? Discipline infractions. Maybe you look at, what are the number one code of conduct violations in our schools? It might be different in the high school as to what it is at the lower levels. So data is certainly an important piece to what we do as school counselors. And we want to expand upon it, cause I think we could do more with it. And then I turn it over to Mrs. Feige. Thank you.
So basically, as we're gonna be implementing the ASCA model in the school district, comprehensive grades K through twelve, we're gonna be creating an advisory committee. So that's our chance to bring in board members, administrators, teachers, parents, to really stop and look at the counseling program. Look at how is it gonna be a results-based program? What kind of data are we using to inform our decisions within our program development? School counseling core curriculum is an important part of the ASCA model. So for example, as a counselor, I'm going to, you'll, you'll see the division of caseload in the next slide. I'm gonna be going into my assigned grade and delivering guidance curriculum that addresses the behavioral needs. My passion is personal, social, bullying prevention, kids feeling safe in school, learning empathy, learning all those critical skills so that they can avoid drug and alcohol use. Their attendance can improve. I'm gonna be going in and delivering that guidance curriculum in the classrooms. I'm gonna be using the pre-post data to really say, is this making a difference in our kids' lives? Is this impacting them personally, socially? Because then we know that will help them with, with their academic achievement as well. This will be the division of the caseloads for the upcoming year. Since I'm currently the intervention specialist here at the Workforce Development Program, it's important for me to stick with my kids. As their counselor next year, I'll be in charge of the kids at E. Hovey, as well as grade eight. All counselors in the ASCA model need to be experts in all areas, personal, social, academic, and career. However, we're each gonna take one of those areas that we're passionate about, that we have experience with, and we're gonna really become the true expert for the district in that area. Mrs. Stubblebine's going to take grades nine through twelve, A through K. And she's gonna be in charge of the academic domain. Her strength is in college preparedness. And Mrs. Habermill is grades nine through twelve, L through Z, and the career domain. We have a local expert here who's a community member and she's got connections with a lot of resources within the community. How can we use that for job fairs and career, things like that? So this is how it's gonna be next year. I got lucky. I got the last couple of slides. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you spend time in the high school on scheduling?
Sure.
Getting, we still have. By level, academic level?
We, if you're asking by grade levels, Mr. Smith, we, we meet with all of our students in a classroom setting to do the registration, talking to them about, you know, the importance of academic rigor. We're also talking about how their coursework applies to their future goals, making sure that they're looking at all the elective offerings, but still making good educational decisions. And then we, you know, certainly follow up with the students if we need to make any adjustments with their schedules.
But I really meant the academic level.
You know, college. Academic ability?
Yes, we still have honors classes for students. And we will offer next year even more advanced placement, which will be above that. We also have dual enrollment programs where our students are getting high school credit and college at the same time, right in our building at the high school. So we have all of those available.
Advanced placement, still, the students are in a regular classroom, but they do extra work on their own and then can...
Or they take a test at the end.
Right.
Do we add many?
We're adding. We have four AP classes for next school year, and certainly the enrollment interest has been there from our students, whereas we currently in years past have only had AP calculus. So next year, we'll have AP psychology, AP music theory, continue with AP calculus, and our seniors have the ability to take AP English literature and then follow up and take the exam in the spring.
No history?
Not yet, not yet.
We have the college level for history. US one is doing the college credit.
But they don't take the college advancement?
They, they can take any advanced placement exam if they really wanted to. Yeah, they absolutely can. Just because we don't have the course, they could still take the exam.
Couple dozen I have offline, ten years I taught, all but one had some college credit.
Awesome.
And they, it wasn't an individual class because that's too difficult to assess.
Well, thank you guys for coming out tonight. Very, very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to item number seven, which is legislative update with Mr. Harding.
Legislative update is based, two things based. One's a House Bill 487, which is really not an educational agenda, but more of a budget review. And in this budget review, they are talking about college courses that the ladies just talked about for students and some of the costs that will be passed down to this school district and some of the costs that will be passed to the parents. The parents might like this because it looks like they are going to pay less fees for the students, for their kids in high school to take college credit courses. Also talks about GED placements or GED graduation, appropriation of a two and a half million dollars to go to an adult career opportunity pilot program for folks over twenty-two years old that don't have a degree or don't have a diploma for a GED. They're looking at bringing some of these younger folks in and giving them the opportunity to go back and do that without much cost. And also appropriation of five million dollars for dropout recovery for young people from the ages of twenty-two to twenty-nine that can earn a diploma in their district or through charter schools, with JBS programs and et cetera, for those students that dropped out from that age group now that are twenty-two to twenty-nine can go back and get their GED or the diploma from their time that they had dropped out of high school. The most important thing I think on, on this legislation update is House Bill 296, which gives the school districts the right, an opportunity, you know, to buy what we call EpiPens, which are the shots that they use, the auto ejectors they use for students that may be having problems with drugs or overdose. Now normally, that's handled by both police departments and fire department. But now, as of April 21st, the governor has signed a bill, an emergency bill that allows the schools to place those in the buildings for emergency uses. And administration in those buildings can inject these children, kids, if they do have a problem. That is, that's great. I mean, that's just something we need to have in the schools. And I'm finally glad to see that, that we are allowed to have that in the schools.
Interesting. Any questions for Mr. Harding? Mr. Harding? No? Okay. Thanks, Grant. We'll move on to item number six, public participation. Anybody have anything you want to talk about?
I have a couple things. I'm Terry Smith, retired high school social studies teacher. First thing, all the school officials I've talked to didn't know that channel nineteen has disappeared. It comes up that you have to have a digital box in order to get it. Well, I talked to Time Warner, I think in seven countries, and finally got a supervisor that spoke English, and he didn't have an explanation. He didn't say whether the schools would be assigned another channel. He knew, he did not know why channel two, which is the city, is all snow, but assumed that it was the same thing. So perhaps school officials can inquire and see if we can't get that back. Now, first they told me I was going to have to buy a box to convert it. Finally, the supervisor said, I'll send you one free. So if they're not going to broadcast it in a regular format, maybe that's what we all need to do, but I'll have to have my seven-year-old grandson hook it up for me.
Sean, are we broadcasting?
Pardon?
It still shows on art, but I guess it's hard to say outside of the school.
Okay.
First I heard about it, but I still don't know.
Okay.
The other thing I was concerned about, and I talked to another teacher that I had lunch with on Friday, the academic challenge, kids do not know their history. US and world, and he was a world history teacher. But I see it time after time. My wife said, I'm not taking your blood pressure because, well, I think the problem is, you've got to get American history from revolution to the present in the high school. There's too much of a gap between eighth grade and high school because they expect them in junior high to go through the Civil War and Reconstruction. And nothing against eighth graders or their teachers, but they're not mature enough, I don't think. So what I would like to have you look into is to have three semesters of American history in the high school, the third one being contemporary, which is very important because when I was a student, we were lucky, lucky to get to World War II. When I taught, I skimmed Vietnam. But I think my kids' test scores, especially in advanced placement, showed that they knew. So watch academic challenge on channel five, and you'll see it time after time. And they're the cream of the crop. And yet they miss so many, what I think was easy, easy, American history questions. And I'm interested to have Vermillion come on because last year they did fantastically. But really, I am concerned about, we have a friend that is chairman of the criminal justice system at Bowling Green on campus. And I asked him, he said that history professors are having a fit. They know their math, which thank goodness I didn't have to have. They don't know their grammar, which I've been screaming about for twenty years. But I really would like to have the counselors and the administrators look into a more sophisticated presentation of history, at least United States history. I think they can do fine with before the revolution in eighth grade. But they also tell me, and I haven't talked to students about this lately, but a few years ago, I said, you remember your Ohio history? Huh? As far as I know, that's required. And some years ago, and I was chairman of the committee that did it, they were going to dovetail American history with Ohio history. I don't think the kids know because they don't know what was capital of Ohio before Columbus or who some of our early governors were, and I've forgotten some of those too. But I really would like to have the quick, quick, guys, look at that.
Okay. I'll mention that.
Thank you.
Chillicothe, right?
Pardon?
Chillicothe. Before Columbus?
Chillicothe was...
Just checking.
Good job. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anybody else want to talk tonight? Students? On the road? No? Okay. You got something to say? Go ahead.
I'm in Harvard history.
Go ahead and state your names.
My name is Melissa Reinfleisch. I'm a junior at VHS. First of all, I'd like to say that our academic challenge team is very good. The past two years, they have been the best that they have ever been. So congratulations.
Good. Are you guys good in history?
Good, I'm sorry.
Strong in history?
Yes.
Good.
We try to be, we try to be experts in everything, not just one subject.
Okay. Well, my name is Monroe Nail, and I'm a junior at Vermillion High School. We are both majorates, and we have been our whole life. I've been twirling since I was four years old. And I, it's heartbreaking that our advisor has recently decided not to come back this next year. And I don't know if it is like okay to talk about this and who to talk about it to, but if I don't say it, my feelings are going to be crushed. Majorate, not only majorate, Vermillion is all about tradition. And people have, it's hard for people to like change, and some people do like change. And I'm not saying that change is bad because you need change, but sometimes too much change, I don't...
I got you.
I heard that Mrs. Neighbors is going to be the majorate advisor. And Mrs. Neighbors is a wonderful person, but I, it was brought to my attention that the majorate advising job was not posted, and so no one knew about the job. I heard through various people that Donna Rini, the high school science teacher, was interested in the job, but she didn't know about it.
Do we want to, you want to schedule some time?
I don't know all the details, but I thought it was posted. I can't say it for sure, but I'm going to tell you that I thought it was, and I only thought that Mrs. Neighbors applied and the previous person that's been in the job so long decided that she just wasn't able to continue with the position. So it's not that she didn't like it or she...
Yeah, we've talked to her, and we understand.
We were looking for then a new majorate person, and to my knowledge, it was posted. But let me look into it, and I know both of you, so I'll come and talk to you.
We're just concerned about what is going to happen in the future.
You guys all have kids, and when you have a kid, you want your kid to strive and do their absolute best in everything. And you always put your kid before another person. And we're really worried and afraid that favoritism will outweigh the rest of the squad.
We always have to be mindful of that and careful of that. And we want the very best, best people to apply for the position, and we want to be able to interview everyone that is interested. So let me look into it. I'll come and talk to you, and I'll get the details. I just knew the very basics, which was what I told you, but I'll dig into it a little bit deeper, and I'll come and talk to you and make sure that we get this right.
And as far as like seniority goes...
If it's, if something wasn't done right, we'll, we'll start it over. If there was something that was not right, I'll check and make sure, and, and we want to get it right because we want the very best people. Not that Mrs. Neighbors is not, but we need to, we need to find out what was the procedures? Did we follow them? Was, who is interested in it? And one thing that we do have to do is, is take internal candidates and give them the best consideration first. And both Mrs. Neighbors and Mrs. Rini are internal teachers. They're working in the school, and that's a positive. So let's go back, though. We'll retrace our steps here. We'll make sure of what the situation is, and we'll get it right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Takes a lot of courage to get up and say something when it's potentially controversial. So thank you. Good job.
Thank you for listening to our concerns.
Students? Nobody? Okay. With that, we will move on to item number seven, reports, leading off with our treasures report.
Nothing clears out a room like finances.
I'll try to be brief here because really I'd like to get into the five-year forecast. One upcoming item, but where we ended up for April, on the revenue side at the top, looking at April of this year versus April last year, we're still down on revenue, four hundred and sixty-five thousand roughly in property taxes, another hundred and thirty-nine thousand in tangible property taxes. The big hit this month, and of course it happens to be my first full year here, is that the revenue isn't matching up like it has historically. It seems to always be a month late for my first year here. So the big one this month was homestead and rollback reimbursement on the revenue side. Last year, this time, we were at one point eight million. This, this time, or this past April, we were at one million because we hadn't received our second reimbursement. So I'm expecting that to flow in in May or June to help bring us back up to speed on that end.
Can I explain what that is briefly?
Which one?
Homestead.
The homestead rollback. Homestead rollback reimbursement is for the taxpayers out there that the state has allowed you to have a homestead exemption. If it's your primary house, you are allowed to claim an exemption, and the state fortunately reimburses us for that. So US taxpayers don't have to pay it, but the state kicks that money back to us from the district. Unfortunately, in the last biennial budget, the governor has cut some of that rollback back. He wants to phase that out in terms of a reimbursement back to school districts because it is quite costly. You know, in the, last year, we got a little over two million in rollback reimbursements, and then that's all state-derived money from sales tax income, sales tax and the income tax, all that's flowing into the state. On the expenditure side, we're, salaries are, are in line with kind of where they were last year. They're slightly below last April, but we are coming up to a three-pay month in May, and then that'll send the skill to the other side at the end of next month. Benefits were two hundred thousand up mainly because of the healthcare increase that we saw last July. Purchased services unfortunately were up there by about four hundred thousand dollars. And as you total it up, we're a little over half a million higher in expenditures than we were last year at this time. Any questions or comments on that? I'll roughly go through my charts. As you can see where we were in terms of our unencumbered balance, you look at last April, you can graphically see that we're, we're about a million down. When I go back to the two days of cash, where we ended up at, we had two hundred and eighty days of cash remaining at the end of April. And then we should be starting that slow downward trend to about July, and then once August comes and we start getting our property tax, we'll go back up to our peaks where we were at three fourteen and two ninety-six. When I look at revenue expended versus salary and benefits, as long as you stay under that hundred percent threshold, you're, you're doing all right. And we were at eighty-nine in April, and, and unfortunately, we've been very steady in terms of our percentage of salary and benefits to our revenue spenders. Seems to stay in the low seventy percentage wise. Now, we're, we're estimate-wise, I knew it was going to be a slow month, and I'm getting closer to being right on, but you can graphically see how our revenue comes in. Same thing with expenditures. You can see where our three-pay months fit with our higher graph points, and then we stay pretty steady around that, one and a half to one point seven five million in expenditures per month. Questions or comments on that?
Questions?
Number two, I ask for your approval of the March 31st, 2014 financial reports that previously provided.
I'll move. A second. Any questions?
Mr. Habermell?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Item three, I'd ask for you to approve the five-year forecast. I just wanted to touch on a couple key points of the five-year forecast. It is the update, and the update is supposed to be kind of a update of where our last one ended in October, and the last one was done by Amy around September, right before she left. And honestly, I don't have much to disagree about, I think she was right on it. She had the historical background here to give you, I think she was there over 10 years, or about 10 years, she gave. She knew what she was talking about as she went through the thing. I'd just like to expand on a couple areas and give you some things to think about as we progress into the future. When you break down the forecast, your revenue to the expenditures, much like what I just went over. As we talk about where our money comes in at, just looking at a pie chart, the big blue section right here is general property tax. That's our local taxpayers, that's our local homeowners, that is the portion that they contribute. The next little red slice is our tangible personal property tax. Really, right now, that's broken down mainly to utilities. Utility tangible personal property rate is 25%. We're fortunate, I'm on Hart Road, to have the first energy kind of hub out there. That is our primary tangible personal property taxpayer in the district. The, when you look at the slice of the pie, though, that's about two-thirds of the district revenue coming in either really on the local front. Our local citizens and local businesses are really helping us support the school. Look at another, about quarter of our revenue comes from our unrestricted state grants. It's our state foundation payment from the state. That's what all schools across the state of Ohio get, some more, some less, depending on what their local share is. And of course, our local share is, you can just visually see it's about two-thirds. So we get the rest, and then I got a small little slice of restricted grants from the state. Right now, they're giving me poverty-based assistance. I've seen that restricted thing go from special ed transportation, transportation, special education costs. Those can all be based on the budget restricted at any time. Property tax allocation was what I just talked about, that homestead rollback reimbursement. And then other revenues makes up the next slice. But the important thing to keep in mind with revenues, especially a 5% change in my property taxes is a lot more drastic than a 5% change in my restricted grants and aid. So we can take losses in some areas, but we can't take losses when it comes to property values.
Right.
Or state foundations, those are, you know, the big slice, three-quarters of the pie. We cannot take cuts in tangible general property or state aid. The rest of the stuff, if they wanna chunk away at that, you know, let them have, let them have a little bit of it. But the other ones are what we need to kind of keep a hold on. As I went through the forecast data, you know, the counselors talked about data and how important it is. And this was surprising to me, as I went in and looked at the forecast and came up with assumption of where I thought property values were going. This is Vermillion City since 2005 to current. It's from the Ohio Department of Taxation. And it's the number of homes sales in a year, and then the average selling price. And you can see the red line is the number of sales. In 2005, we were above 70, and then in 2013, we were at 19. So it's drastically come down, yes.
19,000?
No, 19 homes.
19 homes, okay.
And then the worst part of this, from a treasure standpoint, is the value of the properties. The values dropped from a little under 130,000 to 104,500, I think was the number that the Ohio Department of Taxation listed for the average sale of property in the city of Vermillion. I can take, I can take one of these lines going downward, but I'd love for the other one to be going upward. Ideally, I want both lines to be going upward. I wanna sell, I want 85 properties to sell in Vermillion for 140,000. But if I sold 19 properties at 140,000, I'd be a lot happier, because it means our valuation's going up. But I don't like to see both lines go down. And to me, this was scary, because my own personal experience as treasurer in another district, we had peaked, our low point was in 2009, 2010. This graph tells me that, I pray that we're at the low point, but I don't know that.
Have you looked around, neighboring districts, what's the trend around us?
I have not looked outside of what the county auditor has told us.
Okay, I'd be curious, see what that is.
And I could pull, I could do the same thing with neighboring districts to see where they are.
Could you do that?
Everybody's just so happy, they only want to sell in Vermillion.
Same thing goes with the township, they seem to be a little bit more immune to it, though, outside. And their property value is slightly higher in the township. But same thing, they're on the same downward slope that they have. They did have a spike here, though, in 2012, which I thought was interesting. I thought, oh, it's going up. I don't know that they can catch back up to those levels as we approach 2014. But, but the same thing is going on, and that is scary as well. Basically being made up between the township and the city. As I look at the expenditure side, the same thing in terms of grasp what goes into our expenses in the school district. The big blue side on this side of me is our salaries. We are a service-oriented organization. Our job is to provide education to students. We don't sell a tangible product, we don't have a manufacturing firm, per se. Although we are trying to pump good students out, we are a service-oriented business. The next red chunk, it's a little hard to see because it's dark, is retirement, benefits, and insurance. The green chunk above is purchased services. And then if you look at that whole chart, you, those three areas right there take up a large portion of our expenses. Purchased services are gonna be your utilities, our partnerships with our educational service providers, our educational service centers, different types of special ed needs we may have that we can't, or it's not cost-effective to have an internal person do, we're putting it into that category. Then when you look at what's left or what's remaining, supplies and materials, our capital outlay, which are our long-term or equipment purchases, anything that's typically lasting you over five years. And then the purple and the pink are loans and interest charges that are coming out of there. And then finally, is kind of the catch-all category of other objects.
So the future, I'd love to see the same chart, but, you know, your green space, I'd like to have that be separated out with still salary and benefits. You know, so purchased services is still somewhat, even though we're paying somebody for those, we're still paying those salary and benefits in a sense. So I'd like to know what the two total salary and benefits are. Based upon that chart, it looks like 80%.
I would agree with that number. I think that's, you're right in that 80 range, it's probably a little slightly higher. You know, from the previous stuff I was talking about, you are definitely at about 73, 75% with those two, then add purchased services on top of it. You're all at 80%.
So it's just real hard, no matter what you do, to try and cut your budget. When you're looking at 20%, there's not a whole lot you can do.
Correct.
Unless you're cutting people.
And supplies, you know, you can only cut paper and workbooks for so long before it comes back to buy you. You know, unfortunately, we are in a human capital environment, and that's where you almost have to always look to make the biggest impact. Yes, back to the forecast for the update, cautiously optimistic. I put some key things in my update in terms of, I already talked about property values. I would love to see, you know, Erie County just came off their reevaluation. Countywide, it was a 5% decrease. It looked like by my figures, we hit at about a 4%, a little over 4% in terms of the decrease. Amy had forecasted this year to be the worst. So I'm kind of riding that assumption that hopefully 2013's the worst, and we can only go up from here. You know, the biennial budget, we're in the second year of biennial budget, your guess is as good as mine in terms of what lies ahead for the next four years of the forecast. I can only estimate that, I personally, I think the education will take potentially a hit, because we were kind of well-fed in this last budget. From the expenditure side, you know, we've been fortunate enough to have a solid contract. So at least in my, in terms of me forecasting, I know what salaries will be, because of having the ability to walk into a three-year contract. Healthcare, I see us, that'd be my expenditure side of caution. I think that healthcare costs are going to start to skyrocket potentially. And I go to at least monthly meetings of our consortium, sometimes bimonthly. And I think that the healthcare charges are starting to skyrocket out of control. And something needs to be done with that. And I don't know that, a little Vermillion can speak their piece in the consortium, but I think it'll be a nationwide or definitely a statewide problem. Questions, comments?
Thanks. To approve that?
Yes.
I will, I'll make a motion to approve the forecast.
Second.
Any discussions, or any more questions?
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Habermuth?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Item four, I ask for your recommendation for resolution to establish the Raleigh-Ericoff Scholarship for the Arts and accept the initial donation of $500 from Sally Ericoff and 500 from Jennifer Raleigh LLC.
I'll move.
Sorry.
Is that something that's gonna go into effect this year?
It is, yes. Mrs. Riddle and the counselors, who unfortunately walked out, have had, and myself have had a big part of getting that started this year. I received the money last week, and it's in the fund ready to be awarded. And it's to, the qualifications are someone going into performing arts, the visual arts, production arts. And they have to submit a portfolio to the two ladies doing this, and they will award two scholarships per year for this, so.
That was a separate from the packets that were turned in? Did it catch that, or was that?
It did not catch the packets that I know of, when I went through it, yeah.
Okay, so the kids are all notified?
Well, hopefully their art teachers and.
Yeah, I made sure, I taught, when we had the art fair here, I made sure I announced this to their art teachers. And hopefully, they were, I said, if you had any candidates, pass this on.
Can we get that on the announcements to make sure we're catching everybody that may be qualified?
Sure.
As always, I mean, I think we're grateful for any money we get, and this is fantastic endeavor. Call it over, any other comments?
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Habermuth?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zinnis?
Yes.
Item five, I ask for your recommendation of a resolution to accept the following donations. $100 from Thomas Atkins to be used for the Vermillion School Safety Program, and $95 to the Darren Schultz Thirst for Knowledge Scholarship from the Schultz family.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? And I'd like to thank Mr. Atkins and the Schultz family for their donations.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Habermuth?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinnis?
Yes.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Item six, I'd ask to recommend a resolution to approve the following fundraisers per policy 5830. Golf outing for girls' basketball and volleyball, May 31st, 2014. And a football cookie dough fundraiser, May 5th through May 26th, 2014.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Just one comment.
The third one also, right?
Flag a majorette?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have the third one, will you read it for me?
Flag a majorette mini camp from June 1st to August 18th.
Concern on this one here. We passed the fundraising policy with the intent of reducing, hopefully reducing the groups that were gonna request fundraising. And I think, we're hoping it would go down to the Booster Club, PTL, PTA, music groups, administrators, and things of that sort. Talking to the Booster Club, the sports teams are not, all of the sports teams are not running these fundraisers through the Booster Club as we had hoped. Okay, and that message has gotta get out, that that's what the intent is here. Otherwise, this is what we had before.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what we had before, we're just adding additional step with board has to approve what we had before.
Well, now we're more aware of what's going on, too, yeah. Right, it needs to still.
But these guys need to get with the Booster Club to make sure that they're running fundraising through the Booster Club, so there's not 100 independent groups doing fundraising.
And this is, this is our, I guess, our first year with this policy, but still just need to put a reminder out. One of these is actually, I guess, going on the assumption of approval, because it's already started?
Already done.
Cookie doughs. I already had them at my door before I saw this, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that one, unfortunately.
I mean, there's a curve.
Didn't procedurally go the way it should have, and I think that there's a little bit of a misunderstanding of how this needed to go. We're meeting with the coaches again, going to meet with the entire group and make sure that the understanding is that it's no longer going to be run through the school account. It will be run through the boosters, so.
Right.
We will be at the next meeting, talking with them, and making sure that the expectation is clear.
Not every group nor activity needs a fundraiser. If all the sports got together and went through the Booster Club, they can split that pot, do a couple major fundraisers, split the money however they want to. We can't have soccer, boys, girls, boys, girls, golf. Every single group out fundraising, like we had last year, we had how many, 100 and some, what, 150 fundraisers?
Right.
So these guys have got to get together with the Booster Club to reduce these fundraisers. I guess we have no choice but to approve the cookie fundraiser, since it's already ongoing, May 5th.
Over.
It's over, okay.
It's not over yet, it was the whole month.
Okay. And I know the golf outing, they are running that through the Booster Club.
Okay.
I spoke with them last Friday night, so.
Now, the meeting we have set for, is it this Wednesday with the booster? Are they coming to that, the heads of the booster groups coming to that as well?
Fingers crossed, we've made the announcement a couple times.
Coaches, too, or?
We did not invite coaches.
Okay.
Because it's mainly Booster Club accounting.
And then they, okay.
In the future, though, that's, the thought is that we need to get the coaches to come to the athletic boosters meetings and get more of a support going for, just like, I guess, Mr. Dawson said, getting at least three major fundraisers going. And the only way to do that is to make sure that all the coaches are there, understanding the philosophy, building up that boosters account the way that it used to be for major capital improvements. But then if enough fundraising is done, which we believe it can be, that there'll be additional money as well left over for the things that they want.
And there's certain fundraisers that do better than others, so more teams need to partake in those fundraisers, you know? Not just one in their account.
It can't be just one team doing most of the work, it's gotta be a concerted effort by the groups.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Habermuth?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Zinnis?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna add on one item here. We've got a new teacher in the audience, I'd like to introduce Mr. Anderson. Come up. You wanna come on up here? Talk a little bit.
Sure. It's our pleasure to introduce Mr. Anderson. He came to my office the other day for a final interview. He's going to be a special ed teacher at the high school. And so we're glad that he's here, and we welcome him, and he's gonna give us a little bit of a background, just a brief background on what your experience is, and what you've done so far to get to this point, so, welcome.
Thank you, first of all. A little bit of about myself, I'm from Cortland, Ohio, was in Trumbull County. I was a 44-game student athlete at a place called Lockhaven, it's a Division II school in central Pennsylvania by Penn State. I got my graduate degree at University of Akron in curriculum instruction, and specializing as an intervention specialist. I just wanna take a moment and tell you guys I look forward to the opportunity to work with students with disabilities. And I'm really excited about everything you have going on here.
What else do you plan on being part of, is there any other activities within the school?
Given my background, I'd like the opportunity to work with the football program, if that opportunity presents itself. My father also catches basketball, so really, any supplementals, I'm more than happy to jump in, and any academic clubs, too. Given my background, I do a lot of counseling and work with all kinds of students from different backgrounds.
Have you, where do you live?
I currently live in Trumbull County. I currently live in Trumbull County, Portland. I teach, teach in Sebring as an intervention specialist. Some of my background, sorry, a little bit about my background. I worked two years in Warren City Schools, which has a very diverse socioeconomic background. And then I worked as self-contained classroom in Portage County, which was a mostly disturbed unit, and currently I'm working with SLD students as an intervention specialist in Sebring.
So a whole lot of drive is going to be for you?
Well, I don't plan on driving, I'm planning on moving up to the area, so I'm very excited about the community and all the, all the programs and really with the facilities going up, it's amazing, it really is, and it blows my mind because kind of the areas that I've taught, there, there wasn't those opportunities for, for staff or for students. And it really is great, especially with the initiative with Apple and everything, it's, it's fantastic.
Welcome.
I think you're being a little bit humble too, you didn't say anything about your NFL experience.
Yeah, I did work four years with National Football League, I interned with the NFL in New York City and then from there I worked with NFL Europe for a year and I worked for the Browns for about a year and a half. I worked football operations there and you really learn a lot about the business side of things and how, how to conduct yourself professionally and it's transferred over into schools and it's been a very good thing and I really hope to be a positive role, role model for, for all the students here.
Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, with that, we will move on to item B, which is the superintendent's report.
It usually is part of my weekly report, I give a, a written update to the board, but because this board meeting was so close to the written report that I usually give out, I'm just going to give it to you verbally, so you won't exceed that next written report until the end of this week, but let me just bring you up to date on what's been happening with the new facility. The bearing walls are being completed in the second grade wing and the final area of bearing masonry will be completed this week, so the bearing walls are the main walls. There's been a vapor barrier that's being installed on the exterior masonry, so don't get excited, our school's not going to be black. That black tar paint is just the vapor barrier and they'll be putting some brick over the top of that to, to keep a, a lock of the vapor, basically, so. Structural steel installation's going to continue in a count, in a counterclockwise fashion around the building. Roofing installation's going to start on the gym this week. Kitchen floor is going to be poured on tomorrow, actually. Mechanical, electrical and plumbing roughens are continuing. Technology and furniture bid's going to go out this month. Over at the high school and the middle school, the material submittals are continuing for the windows, doors, heating and air conditioning. Kitchen equipment is being ordered. Work's going to start on the high school and the middle school on June 11th. Technology and furniture requirements are being finalized at the schools there as well. A little bit of an update on the field house, they've been doing some core samples over by where we have the prospective site to be located and so those are being done as we speak really and we're done today. I, I think that they hopefully got those all done before this drainage and that, or this huge downfall today, so. 12 core samples were taken in that area around the building, around the road and the parking areas. And Lesko...
So that's going to tell, is that a floodplain?
Yeah, that, that, as we know, we have prior experience with the floodplain being over to the west of the middle school and we've had prior experience with that, so being safe, we wanted to be sure that every precaution was being taken with that floodplain and doing those core samples and hopefully everything comes back good and, and that's where the location will be. If not, we'll have to look at an alternative location, perhaps right to the west of the, but we, we don't even need to get that far yet. We're assuming that it's going to be okay.
What is the, if we decide to move forward with the field house, what timeline are we looking at?
We're looking at starting in September and being done by April of 2014, so it would be done next, before the end of next school year.
So, so you're looking at coming to us with plans here relatively soon?
And then we would go out to bid as, as soon as possible on that phase of it, correct?
I think they said they, Tim, I talked to Mr. Dean today, he said middle of August to bid and bring plans out.
So we'll see plans middle, middle of August?
Yeah.
I mean, if we see plans mid-August and they start September, are they going to get it done by April?
They believe they can because of the nature of the construction, it's really not quite as complex as the rest of the building with the steel girders and just basically, I think, I can't remember, it was 10 or 14 foot that they're going up with the concrete around the outside, the concrete split face block.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Lesko is going to continue with, that, that's really called the design development phase and that's what they're doing right now. First they want to be sure, well, they've been going through the design development and they're doing the core samples concurrently and, and that's what they're working on. One other thing that's really not part of this project, but I just wanted to mention it to the whole board, Mr. Dawson and I talked about this, this week and we just kind of made this decision quickly together because we figured that everyone would be okay with, with this. They're going to use a 100 by 100 foot area right as you go out, the high school to, as you're coming out of the high school to the east, coming out Sailor Way Drive. When you get to the stop sign of Sailor Way Drive and you're turning right onto Sanford, there's that area of grass there, they want to use that as a staging area to do the road work on Sanford. So we're going to give up just the use of that property, they'll regrade it, they'll, they'll repair the concrete if necessary, and then in exchange, they're going to offer to grade our parking lot for the stadium. So we felt that that was a pretty fair exchange. They'll put everything back in the condition it was and then do some regrading and we just felt that, let's just go ahead with that.
This is Herc, I believe?
Right.
Okay. I would just make sure that that property line is clearly defined so we're not, I think it's weekends live there?
Yeah, they're going to, I think they're going to, they're going to lay out the area with orange cones or whatever that they need to do, but it'll be clearly defined what the area is.
Okay. As long as they put it back?
In the condition, right, that, that was...
Speaking of laying it out, is, they're going to lay out, it's going to be used for set down of construction materials?
I think for their equipment and staging for whatever they need to make that area of Sanford more easily accessible to them, that was most logical. The closer that they are to the repair of the road, the faster that they could get done and move on.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, I'm just concerned for what they put there, if kids are messing around with it, you know, is it going to be secured somehow?
I, I think it's going to be clearly secured so that it's not going to be an issue. We'll make sure that it is, we'll have that conversation with them.
I would have, not sure how long that's going to take, but I think you may need to have Bill Letts start getting a little proactive on the cross-country track for next fall, because I think we're already going to be back in the area by the stadium. If you tear up this area over here where it's not to a condition to run through, you've probably lost a big chunk of the cross-country course. Doesn't it wrap around?
Start thinking about your route.
Because I think it goes where the field house is and from Sanford.
Okay. I'll check on it and we'll be sure that we've got an alternative.
Okay.
Okay, the next item that I had on my report was the community safety meeting. We met with the community on April 16th and we discussed what needed to be improved in our district in terms of building security and building safety. And we had had a prior meeting to that and we had met in a larger, in a large setting like that and it was much better attended than this one was. Unfortunately, this was very lightly attended and so that really was, we thought about why and that was discussed at that meeting that night and one of the reasons was that they thought that this is a very sensitive topic and people just don't want to talk about it. Maybe they're reluctant to talk about it because it's just not something that is pleasant. That was speculation. Another speculation was that perhaps they think that everything is okay, we're doing everything fine, but we don't want to take that for granted. We discussed that in the meeting and wanted to assure them that we don't want to get complacent with our security and what are some of the things that we can and should do better. As a result of the meeting, we, we did make a commitment to some software, it's called Navigate and it's a software that these police and fire department are going to use and it's basically being able to grant them access to our cameras, all of our security cameras. So if they're in the squad car, car, or they're in the fire truck, they're going to be able to pull up on their devices and look at what our security cameras are doing in every aspect of the building. And so if there's a problem and our cameras can catch it, they'll be able to see it and they'll be able to control those cameras. So that's, that's to us was not a major expense, it was an $8,000 total expense for that. We've gone ahead and authorized it already as of this meeting, of that meeting and it's a must. So that's begun and so that was part of what was discussed there. Another thing that, various suggestions were given about what we can do. The doors, the exit doors can have some, on their panic bars when they go out, if an alarm is sounded and students and staff know that we're going to have to limit the number of exits that are going out the buildings during the school day, that's going to help us cut down on the possibility of safety problems. So we're looking into what the cost of that would be and that was one of the suggestions by the community people that were there that night. We think that that's definitely a must and we're going to look into the cost and we'll let you know what that is. The other thing that was suggested was that we upgrade cameras, we've done some of that. We've done quite a bit of it, but there can be more that are done, more sophisticated, more views, more areas, and so we'll look into the pricing and the cost of that. One of the, probably the most controversial of the evening was the suggestion that we do a gated campus and we put up a guardhouse and we allow the, the campus to be basically fenced all the way around. That obviously is a huge expense and there's pros and cons to that. That doesn't mean that that's going to necessarily make it completely safe just because we've gated it off. And that was suggested and discussed that night and it wasn't said that we wouldn't do it, but it was also mentioned that, obviously, that that would have to come with a huge price tag to it and the only way to finance that would be through this House bill that our board was instrumental in getting passed and Senator Gardner, Senator Manning were there that night. They did discuss this with us a little bit and that was a possible way that something of that magnitude could get financed.
I think it's a little radical, but I mean, everything's on the table, whatever it takes to make the buildings more secure.
What we said in the end as a conclusion was that there was not enough people at that meeting and if we want to get more of a pulse of the community, we decided that we're going to send out a survey. We'd like to send the survey out by the end of the month and really what the survey though is going to ask is what do the, what does more community members think need to be improved in our schools? That's really the sum and substance of what the survey would be about. So I just wanted to bring you back up to date on the fact that we held a community meeting like we said we would, we wanted to see what the interest of the community was and the only way to do it a little bit more, getting a wider range of audience would be to put that survey out.
So, so we're not saying that there's anything imminent, we're not looking to put a bond out, we're not looking to put a levy, we're just saying, what do you, Joe Public, what do you think about the safety in our schools?
That's right. Basically, that's what we concluded, that's right.
Good.
Is that, we had board members there that evening and I think that that was their conclusion when we walked out.
Anytime you can get more input, I mean, it's...
That's basically, that was, that was the main thing that we wanted to be sure that we were doing.
Part of it was throw some of these ideas out there and it'll be more than just what was spoken, but...
Right.
Are you, you going to mail a survey, it's going to email?
I'll draft, we'll draft that up here and we'll give it to the board first, I'll send it out in the weekend review and then we'd like to work through the photo journal possibly to get that out if Candy can help us with that. And they're probably the best way for us to reach an audience, we could do something through Facebook, we can do possibly...
Right.
I don't think Twitter is the medium because of the number of characters, but we can work through Facebook, so. Those two outlets and the website.
Good, good idea.
Use Twitter, just let it know it's posted on the website, the survey.
Right. That's all I had under my report.
Okay. With that, we will move on to discussion items. We had one item on there, which was the future sale of school facilities. Talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, I, I guess I'll start us off, but then we can all discuss this just a little bit. As you know, working on this new facility, doing the report, the timeline, as we've talked about, and I didn't say anything about the timeline tonight, but the timeline is still to occupy the new building before Christmas of this year. So right after that, that building comes online and we have to decide what we're going to do with that. Are we going to immediately think about having someone else occupy that, are we going to think about selling that? That's something open for discussion tonight on this agenda as an item. The other thing that we do have interest in and have started to entertain that as a possibility is that there is a party that's interested in the purchase of this building. They've come in, they've expressed some interest, Ryan and I have walked them around the building, we've given them a tour and so there seem to be very serious buyers. And so what we have to decide is, are we willing and able to sell this and do we want to possibly hang on to a building because of future expansion?
Yeah, I, I think the first thing we need to do, we need to really sit down and talk about what we want to get rid of, what we want to keep. If we end up getting rid of, we've already got rid of Lake School, if we end up getting rid of this building, gotten rid of South Street, if we end up getting rid of this, we're quickly becoming landlocked on the one campus. Hopefully your projections turn around and at some point the class sizes start to grow. My fear is 20 years from now that our campus idea backfires and we're landlocked. So I think we really need to talk about, do we keep VES because it's connected to the bus garage? So at some point down the line, there is an option there. Do we keep this property? I mean, I think those are things...
It's a lot of land there, too.
Right. So it's, I just don't want to see us or the district 20 years from now, we, you know, we sold everything for $100,000 here or there, whatever, but 20 years from now, we're landlocked.
I would think if we're looking at the valuation of a building and just the usefulness of it long-term, Vermillion Elementary School at one time was a high school. Granted, there, the bathrooms now are not high school size and we'd have to look at if we have to expand, and who knows how we're going to have to expand though, because I don't know what population might be coming in here next, but, and we might not have to do anything with the bathrooms, but if you look just at the size of the building and what it has to offer, that's probably, not probably, it's more valuable of the two buildings. You've got new windows and you've got a full-size gym.
Beautiful gym.
And you've got a lot of room to expand.
Bleachers.
So if we're looking at the possibility of a building, I think that that would probably be more attractive to us if we're thinking about hanging on to something. This building here, the windows are not as efficient, it's a smaller building, but it's still a nice piece of property. What we have made ready, as you all know, is, and we will be making ready, the north end of the high school where there's an art room, that art room's being moved, we're putting new classrooms, or new availability of classrooms back in that north end of the high school. So one way or another, that's going to be ready. And not one way or another, but it will be ready on the time schedule, that's what we decided to do.
Part of renovations.
That's what we decided to commit to. The music room wing is going to be renovated, that's a given, we're going to finish that. And the offices, the board offices is a given. And the offices, the board offices, is a given. We're going to be moving from here to there. But that does give us the option, if we need to, to move the academy possibly over to the high school if we had to, depending on what type of arrangements these buyers are looking at, though. They've already expressed it, and we can't commit anything to them. What we're really suggesting here tonight, if you all think that the best thing to do is to keep the elementary school, keep Vermillion Elementary School, the next best step, we believe, is to go ahead and auction this property like we would. And we're not committed to the auction price. We can always reject their bid, but let's see what they're willing to offer. We have to go through that process by law. We think, Ryan and I feel that that's the next best thing to do, is just immediately go ahead right now and put it up for auction.
Well, I think we need to put this on next month's agenda, or if we have a special meeting, just to talk about the future, just the game plan, whether it's this property or that property. And it's good that we've got interest in this property, and if the determination is that we want to sell this and keep that, or however, if that determination is made that we want to sell this with the interest, I think we do go ahead and maybe look at.
I think we've.
Put this up.
In past discussion, though, this has been a property that was always intended to be sold. So, I mean, as next step after the Y was completed, and I think we're at that point where, if you guys are willing to make a recommendation, I'd like your idea of, and what you're saying, Dale, for future growth of rethinking whether or not we're going to get rid of VES. We can always hold on to it a little bit longer, but I think we should, you know, if we're ready to go, let's go.
Yeah, do you all feel that there's a reason that we have to wait? Because we're not losing anything by going ahead and putting this up for auction and doing it right away? Is, is there?
We don't have to accept any bids?
I have no issue putting it out there for feelers and then, and then we can make a decision when the time comes.
We'll know what the commitment, we'll know what the commitment of anyone that wants to buy this. We always have the ability to reject it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need, I like the fact of going quick, but I think we need to talk about, hey, we're going to have a minimum price on the bid, or.
None of that matters.
What the, I think it does.
Not for auction.
Not for auction.
You can have a minimum bid on there, starting bid.
Do you want us, we can, we can.
Yeah, I would think that this property's going to be worth more than the other ones. Do we know that? Than the other ones we've auctioned off?
Well, Sailaway had, I shouldn't say, the elementary school already had the brand-new doors and windows done. This one does not.
Right.
I think property value, this is greater than, obviously, the YMCA property, I would think. I don't know, I don't know what the square footage, you know, but, you know, I'm no.
It's pretty close. They were comparable, square footage-wise. And parcel-wise, too, property size-wise, they're, they're pretty close. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think that this is sitting on nine acres, possibly.
Nine.
Maybe, close to that.
I don't think it's going to hurt to start the paperwork process.
Yeah. I mean, just authorize them to go ahead and just make that motion tonight to go ahead and start for auction, and, you know, we don't have to accept anything.
Do we need a motion for that?
And we can still further the discussion.
To start the auction process?
We do.
Do you guys not want to have the discussion about the long-term, are we all?
We still can, though, that's what I'm saying.
We still can. I think we still can. I think we can make a motion to allow Superintendent Trezor to start auction proceedings on this property.
I think that that would allow us to flesh out whether or not this prospective buyer is.
Or any other buyers.
What we want. And then, yes, if there's any other buyers, they're going to come forward at the auction. And maybe they're going to outbid by a large amount the prospective one that we have. I don't, we don't know.
I mean, we've got some precedence right now on what the other properties sold for, 150, 100. So, I mean, I think as a board, I mean, I know where we're at, you know. And I think hopefully they would, any bidders would.
Do I, in terms of what?
Yeah, the past motions we've made.
I do not. I didn't know that they was actually required to make a motion on it.
Yeah. I would recommend that we move on tonight with the understanding that, let's start the auction process. If there's a motion that needs to be made before we can formally start it, let's throw it on a meeting, and I think we may have another special meeting.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. Thanks.
One more quick discussion, very quick, since you got on the subject of this property. A few weeks ago, and it may already be taken care of, I don't know, but a resident who lives on West River, whose property, the back of their property faces this property.
Right.
Had a minor complaint about the, in the side yard over here where the old ice pond used to be.
Right.
How tall the weeds are and unsightly. So if, whenever we do our lawn work, if we can get that cut down, it would be appreciated.
I will do that.
Any other discussion items?
Yeah, you know, I didn't see on here, just later on, we could bring up something, so there's a discussion item. You know, a concern I've got is our conference situation, or the fact that we are not in a conference. We pulled out of the NOL without really ever being in the NOL, just because we thought for sure, without a shadow of a doubt, we were going to move into the PAC. I mean, we knew there was a chance we couldn't make it in, but, you know, we were fairly certain the PAC was going to take us. Now, we just got another letter recently saying that the new conference is starting up with Bay, and those guys don't want us, they refuse to take us. You know, I just wanted to hear what everybody's thinking. At some point, we got to look at.
Yeah, I think right now, we're all sitting here with our fingers crossed, hoping that something's going to fall in our lap. And I think the SBC opportunity is gone.
Yeah.
The PAC is not going to do anything, and the new conference said no. So I think we're in a position of either starting our own thing aggressively, or looking at the NOL, or independent.
I'm personally not in favor of looking at the NOL. I, the more I thought about it, the, the distance to the west is pretty great for most games. I don't think parents would have an opportunity to get to their kids' activities. I would be, sorry, flood warning. I would be in favor of, of being patient and waiting it out and hoping that something emerges, or potentially trying to get something started on our own.
Well, I think that, that concern was brought up before the NOL, that, and I think that they don't have some of the middle school sports, they don't have some of the high school sports, soccer, they don't have.
I don't think we're a good fit there.
Well, I think the problem is the middle school. What's middle school doing for football?
They're in the position now, we're not in the conference.
The high school can play independent in athletics.
Middle school can play independent, too. The Lorraine and Ollieria schools are available. There's, there's middle schools out there that'll play us.
Does Phil have a schedule?
Phil has been relatively successful in finding opponents for us, both at the middle school and the high school, but that sure is a challenge, that middle school issue. And, yeah, I guess it's going to be a question of, if we, should we meet in a, in a separate small committee with this, and then come back as a recommendation to the whole board as to what, or come back with a more concise bit of information to you? Let's, let's maybe review this once more with the athletic director.
This is a big issue, is my concern. And, you know, I just don't want to see us, the time just keeps ticking, and, you know, I just don't want to be in a situation where we're, two years from now, saying, man, I'm bad.
One or two, one or two years, playing, going to Youngstown and Dayton and stuff like that for football is acceptable, if you will, but four or five.
We're two years into it right now.
I was going to say, four, five, six years driving to Dayton and Youngstown to play football is not acceptable.
But we're four years right now.
I get that, that's what I'm saying.
If we made a decision right now, we're four years.
That's what I'm saying.
Now you're looking at six years.
So, I mean, Chris.
But I believe that Mr. Brickner's already improved upon that situation with some schools that have committed to play us in football that aren't that far away. I mean, the schedule we played the last, this year and next year is going to get better based on what I'm hearing, that, that we've got some better commitments now.
Can he bring home his rough drafts?
How about if we meet with a small group, whoever wants to meet, find out what Mr. Brickner has committed to, or can for sure know that we are committed to, and then come back and present to the whole board? We'll read quickly.
I think it's easier to have a public board meeting. I mean, that's my personal opinion, because we've got to make the public aware of where we're at. Because this thing just keeps dragging on.
We could, we could have, when we come back with that report out, it could be at a public session of a board meeting.
Okay.
And we could meet as soon as anyone is ready to meet. Mr. Brickner and I will be glad to either schedule a morning, afternoon, or evening meeting as quickly as the rest of the board is ready to meet. Or not the rest of the board, two board members would be ready to meet.
Okay. Anything else?
One last thing, just a question. At a previous board meeting, we agreed to open enrollment to the state for our district. Do we do anything, or do we plan to do anything as a district to market that, I guess, or make it known?
We're working with Mr. Bellada, Mr. Lamb. This is, was just approved, but we've been thinking about that, and what we've got to be sure that we're following is OHSAA rules. We got to be, whatever we can do legally, we will do, but we've got to be careful that we're not crossing any lines with OHSAA rules and things like that. So give us a little bit of time yet to make sure that we're within our rights to do whatever we can that's possible as a public school district, and we definitely would like to see us maximize.
I mean, I just, even, even to the extent of a newspaper story or something like that, to say, hey, our doors are open.
Right.
You know, just an opportunity to put additional students in our classroom seats.
Right. We're looking at that. We've been thinking about that. And we'll, how about at the next board meeting, we'll report to you what, what we are and can be doing.
Yep.
We'll do that.
Sounds good, thanks.
Anything else? With that, we will move on to the consent agenda.
I've got some things I need to have all from the consent agenda.
Got to go to the end here.
Okay.
Consent agenda, Superintendent Trezor recommended the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. And the consent agenda consists of, A, review May 13, 2013 board meeting minutes; B, approve minutes of the board meeting as follows, the regular meeting of April 14, 2014; C, approve the appointment of Tim Costello to the Ritter Public Library Board of Trustees for the period of May 13, 2014 through December 31 of 2018; D, approve a two-year agreement with Julian and Grub Inc. to conduct an agreement, to conduct an agreed-upon procedure review of the Medicaid program at a cost of $1,900 per year; E, to approve a three-year agreement with the Healthcare Process Consulting Incorporated for managing the district's Ohio Medicaid school program at a cost of $6,250 per year commencing on July 1, 2014; F, approve a continued membership in the OHSAA for the 2014-15 school year; G, approve renewal of the Athletic Trainer Services Agreement with the Cleveland Clinic for the period from August 1, 2014 through July 31, 2016; Approve the resolution to oppose removing the words "thorough and efficient" from the Ohio Constitution language regarding the standard for public education. I'm not going to read all that. If anybody wants to see it, we've got a copy of the agenda here. I, resolution to approve the following employment action, letter resignation from the following, Rochelle France, secretary, effective immediately; termination of employment of Lisa Elliott, effective April 28, 2014; suspend the contracts for the following, effective August 22, 2014; Galene Wiegand, educational aide; Susan Wells, educational aide; one-year limited teacher contract for 2014-15; contract year to the following, pending satisfactory completion of background check and verification of experience. That would be Mr. Scott Anderson, we met earlier, Rebecca Trenter, and Laura Moyer. Continuing teacher contract, beginning with 2014-15 contract year to Jeff Olson; a one-year limited contract for the 2013-14 year at the special project rate of $28 per hour to Enjinet Caffarel for summer school for 2014. Then we've got a whole list for a one-year additional duties contract. I'm not going to read all the names. If anybody wants to see that, we'll come back to that. Then we've got one-year supplemental contracts for the 2014-15 contract year to the following. Once again, we've got a list, Craig Bennett, Vince Garrett, Jeff Keck.
As listed.
As listed. We will approve the list, and then we'll come back to items that we want to take off before we vote. Right? That's how the consent, that's how the agenda's laid out.
So I'll move.
Second.
What items are we looking to remove?
Christine Reynolds, assistant senior class advisor.
We had some other questions in that area that were brought up tonight.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we remove item I, just in general, for brief discussion?
Let's move, let's just remove the area. If you turn the page here, where it says one-year additional duties contract, that big, long section?
And the supplemental.
That carries over, yeah. Let's do that, just because of the timing and some questions that came up tonight. So we would start here.
Yeah, we're at. You got Laura Neighbors on there for major ed advisor.
That whole section, we're going to, just hold off.
We're taking all of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So from the top of page, from the third topic on page four through the approval, we'll take off. So from here to the end. I didn't see anything out there that was time-sensitive. Most of it's for next school year.
Hey, I want to also say to Mr. Brickner, this is the fastest we've seen, and he's taken a lot of heat throughout the years, and so have you. But there's a lot of timely, extreme, almost too early.
Yeah, there's some that are.
So.
Yeah, there's some that are for things that aren't even done this year. So he's getting there, it's a move in the right direction.
Yeah.
So we give him some credit there.
Kudos. I'll make sure Lexi will. Hope that we.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll look to approve the consent agenda minus the sections that we talked about.
The one-year additional duties.
Right, the one-year additional duty contracts.
And supplemental.
And supplemental contracts.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Habermell?
Yes.
Mrs. Zennis?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Do we want to leave these tabled, the topics?
After executive session.
Yeah, we can do it after executive session.
Okay, okay. So right now, the, we'll leave those items tabled, I guess, then. Item number 10, public participation. I hear you got questions. What was that?
What do you?
Page four, starting right there.
The additional duties and the supplementals.
All supplementals and additional duties, contracts.
All of them.
Just for discussion.
Well, I know, like, they.
Can I come up here?
I'm Heather Habermell, and I was just wondering, I know, like, they give meetings, and they talk about, like, scholarships to seniors, but they don't talk about them until, like, the end of, like, May to seniors. And so I was wondering if they could start, like, meetings and talking to, about scholarships to underclassmen so that they know what they're working for, and not just knowing about the scholarships after they're already done to school.
I think we start, that's a great question, and we've been working on that. I think they started this year in the fall. Typically, they've never talked about them to the senior class at all, but we've been trying to move that direction, and they've talked about them in the fall. So at least their whole senior year, you know, well, this, you know, if I want to apply for this scholarship, I need to do this and this and, and all that, but.
But it's a very good point.
Yes.
It would be nice to maybe know from the very day you come in what scholarships are available. So it's a good point.
Or end of junior year, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they'll be sacred, they'll never.
Right. Absolutely.
Just so they know what's, some of them have special requirements. So rather than finding out, you know, in March, what So rather than finding out, you know, in March, what you need to do, you've got four weeks to fill out the application, there's no way you can get the community service or whatever some require, that they know ahead of time so they can get started on some of those things.
Do you have, from a student's point of view, how you would like the information to get to you and what do you want, how would you like to see it and what, in what forms and what, what format?
I don't, I don't like really necessarily mean like in a certain way, just like so that younger students know what they're working for, like that they're able to get these scholarships, that there's a lot of scholarships they're able to achieve.
Should be a booklet you grab as your freshman year, day one, you can grab and you know, day one, why not?
Or some kind of like eating.
Here, here's the scholarships we got to offer.
And it really advertises, you know, the people that donate the money. I mean, it lets people know that there's a lot of people in this community have made a tremendous commitment to providing a very high dollar level of scholarships. And I think it's a great idea. And I think it should be something given to you as a freshman and I, I love it.
And I haven't checked, they were on the website, I don't know if they took them down after the deadline or if they're still.
I haven't seen them on there.
Up. Thank you, good question.
Good job.
Thank you.
Need is not your only goal, right?
What was that?
Pardon me?
Need.
Right, 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 right.
Oh, no, no.
Academic achievement.
Some are.
Right.
They're all, they're all a little bit different.
Correct. Any other comments, anybody? No? Okay. Okay, we will move on to item number 11, which is recommend a resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules of state statutes.
Hold on a second.
Are we coming out and acting on anything?
We may. Yeah, let's just go on. Who made the motion, I'm sorry?
She died second.
Shelby, okay. Dave second.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Habermough?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
And Mr. Dawson?
Yes. Got nine o'clock.